Okay, now you're ready.
Okay. Good morning and welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for January 24, 2023. Madam, we will be going into closed session. Madam Clerk, would you like to read the items?
Yes, please. Item one, public employment pursuant to government code 54957B1, title county executive officer. Item two, pursuant to government code 54957.6, conference of county designated labor negotiator Judy Hawkins regarding the following employee organizations: Sheriff's Management Unit, Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association, Deputy Sheriff's Association, Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union. Item three, pursuant to government code 54957B1, public employee performance evaluation, title interim county executive officer.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there any public comment on either one of these items? Seeing nobody in the room, is there anybody online?
None online.
None online? Okay, we will close public comment and we will go into closed session. Okay. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for January 24th. If you can all rise, if you can, for the pledge. Holly, can you please lead us?
No.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You did well.
I did well.
I'll let this hold now. Okay, Madam Clerk, can you read out from our closed session?
I think we'll wait to report out since we have to go back into closed session, and then she can report out next week.
Okay, all right. We will be going back into closed session. All right, staff announcements. This is time for the county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public. Do we have any staff announcements? Yes. Sheriff?
Good morning, Sheriff DeBusschere. Good morning, Chair Stoffenelli, Honorable Supervisors, County Council. Welcome Supervisor Hubbard. Haven't had an opportunity to congratulate you, and welcome you to the team. Good luck. And remember, everything that Marita said about me is probably not true, and everything that Marita always did for me was give me whatever I wanted. I'd like you to keep nodding your head there, Gary. I'm here this morning. I want to just kind of give the world an opportunity to understand how fantastic our volunteers are. I want to read some statistics for you. Our volunteers are retired folks in the community that just do everything for us, and their paychecks are just so phenomenally high, I keep adding zeros to the end of it. So, this was for last year's activities. Between meetings and trainings, they put in 1,676 hours. Between fairs and events, they worked 2,066 hours. They worked 2,600 hours at the substations. They did 3,600 hours in patrol. They worked 774 hours at the jail and the sheriff's office. In the unit administration, they did 1,470 hours. Special assignments, 526 hours, for a total of 12,720 hours. We have 30 volunteers. Thirty-one now. We started with 29, we're up to 31. They ran 55,000-plus patrol miles. They did 126 vacation house checks. They served 20, did 20 services paper. They had the substations opened, and we have three of them right now working on a fourth check. They were open for 580 days total. They had 628 folks walk into the substations, and they had 186 calls. And here's the kicker. Out of those 31 people, they drove in their personal vehicles darn near 27,000 miles. So, big kudos to our volunteer unit. They've done a fantastic job. So, I just want to put a word of thanks out to them and applaud them.
Yes, absolutely.
So, thank you. Any questions for me?
Any questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Cory?
Good morning. Chairman members of the board, Cory Allen Health and Human Services Agency. I wanted to announce that the Calaveras County Public Health Department has and will launch its brand-new mobile van service, starting tomorrow right here at the government center. They will be here January 25th from noon till 3:00 p.m., weather permitting. There will be free flu vaccinations and take-home COVID-19 rapid antigen tests. Public health education and information on their services will be available, as will a Calaveras County Veterans Representative or an outreach coordinator to answer questions regarding new VA benefits available to those eligible. If you're interested in securing a flu vaccine at this event, we ask that you still go to myturn.ca.gov, just as we did in the past with vaccinations, but walk-ins are welcome while vaccines are available. So, with that, just wanted to make sure that the community knows to join us there.
Thank you, Cory. Any other staff announcements?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, just a reminder to the board and the public. On this Thursday, the 26th, 10:00 a.m. at the San Andreas Community Center, there's a presentation, a hearing being put on by the state related to the state responsibility area, fire hazard severity zones, maps, very important, showing how the state evaluates the different properties in the state as far as how big a threat do they pose to the public. So, that'll be happening. I know several members of the board have expressed interest in attending that session. And in response to that, I'll be working with, I think, the chair and vice chair on that and putting together a letter that we can send on behalf of the county to the state. But we'll hear what the comments are at that meeting and get input from the chair and vice chair and put a letter together.
And this is their second meeting. The first one wasn't very well advertised, so they were kind of, we kind of got on them and they agreed to have the second meeting. So, hopefully it's well attended. I know it's 10:00 a.m., a lot of people work. I had a little problem with the 10:00 a.m. I was hoping they would do it later in the afternoon. People got off work, but they stuck at 10:00 a.m. So, that's Thursday. Any questions? Any comments? Okay. Any other staff announcements in the room? Hearing none? Is there any online?
There is none online.
No online? Okay. We will move on to item number four. This is a winter storm update. This is an informational item. This is OES. It's receive an update presentation from staff on the ongoing winter storms, which began on or about December 29, 2022. Do we have John? We do have John. Thank you for coming, John.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Honorable Board Members. John Osborne, your Director of Emergency Services. Yesterday afternoon, FEMA provided us with Amendment Number Three to the Notice of Major Disaster Declaration. This notice amended the declaration originally issued on the 14th of January and included Calaveras County for individual assistance.
Yay.
Along with that assistance, there's quite a bit of it. It includes community disaster loans, crisis counseling, disaster legal services, disaster unemployment assistance, fire management assistance grant, disaster housing assistance to individual and households in presidentially declared disaster areas, presidentially declared disaster assistance, disaster housing operations for individuals and households, presidential declared disaster assistance to individuals and households' other needs, disaster grants, public assistance, presidentially declared disasters, and hazard mitigation grant. So, what's that mean? The Individual and Households Program, IHP, includes housing assistance and other needs assistance. Community service programs include crisis counseling programs, disaster unemployment, disaster legal services. Folks that have been affected by the disaster can now register with FEMA directly by calling 1-800-621-FEMA or 3362. You can register in person at a state local assistance center or a joint disaster recovery center. We will be hosting a combination of those two things on February 1 and 2 at the fairgrounds, and also on the Internet by going to disasterassistance.gov or using FEMA's mobile app. Specifically for the IHP program, it provides lodging expense reimbursement, rental assistance, repair assistance, replacement assistance, direct housing program. It's 100% federally funded, up to a max grant award of $41,000. Other needs include personal property, transportation, medical/dental care, childcare, funeral, miscellaneous, moving and storage, critical needs assistance, and clean and sanitize assistance. The cost share is 75% federal, 25% state, and that also has a maximum grant award of $41,000. The Crisis Counseling Assistance and Training Program provides supplemental funding to eligible state and local governments and nongovernmental organizations to assist disaster-impacted individuals and communities in recovering from the major disaster through the provision of community-based outreach and psychoeducational services. The goal of this is to aid survivors in recovering from the adverse reactions to disasters and to begin to rebuild their lives. The Disaster Unemployment Assistance provides unemployment benefits and reemployment assistance services to survivors who are not eligible for regular state unemployment. Disaster Legal Services provides legal aid to low-income survivors. Types of legal assistance offered include help with insurance claims, recovery or reproduction of legal documents lost in the disaster, help with home repairs and disputes with contractors and/or landlords, and the preparation of powers of attorney and guardianship materials and FEMA appeals. So, that covers our community. We obviously have been 20, what's today, the 24th? Twenty-six days into a very deep response, and thus far, we have estimated our losses at just over $3 million as a county. As we speak today, the CalOES and FEMA public assistance teams are out assessing damages. We were out in the field all day yesterday doing the same. We have two teams out, and they're examining the public damage right now to infrastructure such as roads, our public utilities. And as they work through that process, they'll report back to FEMA, and in the hopes that there'll be a fourth amendment to this declaration that will include public assistance for the county. In addition to that, Team Rubicon, which is a volunteer group, came up yesterday, sent an assessment team to begin looking at if they can deploy resources to our county to help individual folks begin the cleanup. So, in addition to the IAA, there's also Team Rubicon that's out there. That's a free service. CalOES and the ADD. And I think that's all I have for an update this morning, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you, John. Is there any questions? We will move on to recognitions and acknowledgements. I'm going to do number six first. And Amanda, you are doing this.
Okay. This is proclamation recognizing January 2023 as Mentoring Month in Calaveras County. Whereas January is a National Mentoring Month, an annual campaign to recruit quality mentors to provide additional networks of support for young people. And whereas Calaveras County recognizes the contributions of volunteer mentors who guide young people to success in their education, career, and well-being. Whereas mentoring programs like Calaveras Mentoring Program in Calaveras County makes our community stronger by enabling impactful relationships that increase social capital for young people and provide invaluable support networks. Whereas through the COVID pandemic, mentoring programs have stepped up to ensure that mentoring relationships continue visually, while also connecting with families to critical resources and services. And whereas mentors can help young people explore careers and build skills to achieve a higher lifetime economic outcome through activities like helping them start career goals, write a resume, practice for interviews, and connecting them to opportunities, and many more. Whereas researchers demonstrated that mentoring programs have significant positive impact on a variety of academic achievement measures, including scholarships and engagement, school-related misconduct, and peer support. And whereas mentoring can be especially effective prevention and intervention strategy for young people with marginalized identities. And whereas quality mentoring promotes healthy relationships and communication, positive self-esteem, emotional well-being, and relationship growth. Whereas a mentor, with a mentor, youth-based risk, are more likely to enroll in college, and less likely to start using drugs, and more likely to volunteer regularly in their communities. And whereas one in three young people still grow up without a mentor, demonstrating the need for additional awareness and resources for mentoring programs. Whereas National Mentoring Month is the time of year to celebrate, elevate, and encourage mentoring across our state and recruit caring adult mentors in Calaveras County. And with that, is there any comment?
Good morning, Health and Human Services Agency, Meili Johnson. I just wanted to say that the mentorship connection is really important to building a strong community, both for children and adults. And mentoring programs such as those offered by our Office of Education seek to connect Calaveras County children to trusted adults that provide extra support when they need it, build self-esteem and confidence, and provide a consistent relationship to an adult that will make a difference in the lives of children in Calaveras County. So, with that, I'd like to introduce Kayla Gaffney and Sarah?
Stouden.
Stouden, from our County Office of Education, to discuss some of the programs that are available to our youth in our community.
Good morning. So, we are here to ask you to recognize January as National Mentoring Month in Calaveras County. National Mentoring Month is a nationwide recruiting campaign designed to connect young people with caring adults and to recognize the mentoring relationships that form and thrive every day. As mentioned, my name is Kayla Gaffney. I manage the Calaveras Youth Mentoring Programs out of the County Office of Education, and this includes our one-on-one first grade through 12th graders mentoring program and our Young Adult Life Skills Program called Adventures in Mentoring. Calaveras Mentoring has been serving our county since 2003, and we fully screen, monitor, and support our volunteer mentors and mentees and provide training, field trips, and mentor council. Volunteer mentors spend time for at least one year with their mentees, having fun and building relationships. Our mentees learn to build stronger relationships, explore new interests and hobbies, and improve their self-confidence, decision-making, and view of their future. We are also proud to share that every senior has graduated high school that has participated in our programs in recent years. At its core, mentoring shows our young people that their community cares about them, sees their strengths, and wants to nurture their talents. We have some pretty amazing kids in Calaveras County. We have youth who face life's challenges with strength, resilience, creativity, and hope. Young people who are brave enough to invite safe adults into their lives, who believe in them and want to invest in their greatness, and support a smoother road to adulthood. During National Mentoring Month, we also want to celebrate our other mentoring programs within Calaveras County, such as CASA, Core Appointed Special Advocates, where mentors or CASAs go above and beyond to support youth, or FNL Mentoring, which is a school-based mentoring program, as well as our Independent Living Program, which is for current or former qualified foster youth, young adults. Calaveras mentoring programs receive financial and administrative support from the County Office of Education, various contracts with county agencies, and grants and individual donations solicited by the Calaveras Mentoring Foundation, whose mission is to raise awareness and funds for local youth mentoring. This proclamation today helps us celebrate and grow these important programs. Every youth who wants a mentor should have one, but not every youth gets one. Currently, in our Calaveras Youth Mentoring Program, we have 10 kids throughout Calaveras County on our waiting list, which often will grow much larger to over a dozen. We depend on community members to spread the word about Calaveras Mentoring and help us find volunteer mentors for our eager young people. Please contact us if you know someone who would make a great mentor for one of our amazing kids, and thank you very much.
Is there any public comments in the room? None? Is there any online?
There are no public comments online.
Okay.
At this time, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
You go, second?
Second.
Okay. Are there in favor?
Aye.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim January 2023 as National Mentoring Month in Calaveras County. Thank you.
have this one. You want to read it?
Yes.
Read out.
Could I just say also, I've worked quite a bit in this field, and there are over 49 million people who live in modern slavery, more than ever before in history, and this is incredibly important. This proclamation recognizing January 2023 as Human Trafficking and Child Sexual Exploitation Prevention Month in Calaveras County. Whereas human trafficking and child sexual exploitation continue to pose a serious threat to our community, and whereas these are community problems, and finding solutions depends on the involvement of people throughout the community. And whereas all victims of human trafficking and child sexual exploitation, whether for the purpose of forced labor, sexual slavery, or commercial sexual exploitation, should have access to a safe place to live, appropriate medical care, and counseling or mental health services. And whereas parents, guardians, family members, foster care providers, childcare providers, educators, law enforcement personnel, medical professionals, mental health professionals, social service providers, and the public all play an important role in working collaboratively, sorry, collaboratively to prevent human trafficking and sexual, child sexual exploitation. And whereas the state of California has proclaimed January as a Human Trafficking and Child Sexual Exploitation Prevention Month. And with that, are there any?
Good morning, Health and Human Services Agency, Meili Johnson. I just wanted to take a few minutes to just really recognize that, like you said, Supervisor, human trafficking is a global issue. It affects millions of young children, teens, even early adults, all across our nation. Calaveras County will encounter a small number of those cases every year. However, the identification, the education, and the support we're able to provide to those victims means the world to them, and that's what really our focus is in Calaveras County. I just wanted to take a few minutes to recognize my partners for their collaboration and advocacy in the prevention and identification and education of these victims or potential victims. The Calaveras County Probation, Behavioral Health, Public Health, our Office of Education, including our ILP teams and our mentoring programs, CASA, the District Attorney and the Sheriff's Office, the Resource Connection Crisis Center, and the Children's Advocacy Center. The work they do every day really matters, and to every victim that's being trafficked that we are able to help identify, intercept, and provide support and education to help them live a better life, matters every single day. Thank you, guys.
Good morning, Vicki Renke. I just wanted to make a comment about this because I've been watching what's happening at our border and the trafficking that's happening with young children and adults as well, but it just breaks your heart to see what's going on. And so, I just want to bring awareness to that of these open borders that we have in California and the United States is not good. This problem is going to get bigger in our state because of that. So, I hope everyone will write letters, fight for our borders to be closed so that this trafficking will stop at the border, and then we can deal with what's happening within our United States. Thank you.
Didn't plan on speaking. I don't think we have to worry about our borders. I think we have to look internally. I know right now there's a couple of congressmen at the federal level that are being accused and investigated for just these kinds of crimes. For God's sakes, it's us. We're the sickos.
Are there any comments online?
There are no public comments online.
Thank you.
I'll call for the vote. Thank you for coaching me. Can I call for a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Now, therefore, be it resolved.
All in favor?
Oh, so, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm getting this down here.
That's good. You're doing all right. Keep going.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that this Calaveras County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the month of January 2023 as Human Trafficking and Child Sexual Exploitation Prevention Month in Calaveras County, and encourages citizens to work together to support human trafficking and child sexual exploitation prevention activities in their communities and schools during this month and throughout the year.
on to general public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter and jurisdiction of this board and is not posted on our consent or regular agendas may be addressed during a public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on our agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If the public comment is completed before the 30 minutes allotted time, the board the board may immediately move on to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for a remainder of the comments to be heard. So is there any general public comments in the room? Bonnie?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Y'all, kids, some of you to me. A story not from days of yore, but rather recent. About forty or fifty years ago in Calaveras County, there was a big controversy. Some desecrators of what God and nature has created decided to build a dam. There was two factions. On one side, there were the environmentalists, the hippies, the college students, the rafters. And on the other side, there was the greedy, money-grubbing capitalist pigs. Oh, am I biased? Well, you know what side I was on. Okay, one of our guys decided to go over and started working for the Army Corps of Engineers. Big bucks for a college student. We hadn't seen him at the river for a while, so we went to his house in Sonora. I don't know how to describe this. The door opened. There was a window on the other side of the room. And I could hardly describe it. I thought I saw slabs of meat hanging on the wall with blood all over the floor. I thought I was looking at a slaughterhouse. I mean, I didn't, I was, I'm thinking about it right now. It's taking my breath away. I went inside and what I saw was this. Could somebody pass this around to these guys? Giant slabs of stone, rocks on one side, amethyst, red, purple, orange, green, beautiful. This room was sparkling. It looked like a kaleidoscope. I'm not kidding. It was incredible. It was, it was no, not, no, not a museum. It was everywhere. Kevin, where'd you get this stuff? So, well, you know, I've been driving truck for the Corps. And he says, one day my truck broke down. And I was stuck on the road waiting for the tow truck or the mechanic to come. And he says, I swung in over to the side and I was peeing on the rocks. And he said, and all of a sudden I saw this sparkle. And he said, and I said, whoa, what is this? He picked it up, and it was something like this. And he said, he started looking around. He says, it was everywhere.
Bonnie? We've got a red light there, so-
Oh, God, you're not going to hear the end of the story.
Next week, or the next board meeting?
No.
You could come in the second half?
I'm sorry.
Oh, come on.
I'm sorry.
We missed, we missed your stories, Bonnie.
You guys are so cheap with your time. Give us five minutes again. Go back to the old days. I'm sorry.
Any other public comment? Good morning, Ralph.
Good morning. Now for the rest of the story. Good morning. Happy New Year, Supervisors, and welcome Supervisor Huberty. I'm sorry. Huberty, I'm sorry. I'm Ralph Copeland out of Copperopolis. Whatever Jack says about me, it's true. I'm here to give the board a heads up regarding their constituents' CCWD water and sewer bill. CCWD has begun the process to review their rate structures. They do this every five years. Community workshops will begin around April or May, with final rate structure presented to the CCWD board for approval by June. They are developing a customer outreach program to get in front of the obvious concerns from rate payers. So you may be getting residual comment from your constituents who are CCWD rate payers. Also, CCWD has received pushback from the Copperopolis community regarding a biosolid facility proposed at the Copper Cove Wastewater Treatment Plant. Over fifteen hundred signatures, Copperopolis signatures, have been collected. And it's my understanding this petition package is scheduled to be submitted to the proper county agencies. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. Any other public comments?
Good morning again. Because this is the beginning of the year here, I wanted to request that in the near future that you have an update on what's happening with the marijuana grows. We were supposed to get updates every year, and I don't believe I saw one at all last year. So I'm requesting that that get on the agenda and we find out where we are with the number of grows, the money that's been brought in, what it's costing the county to process this industry. So anyway, that was just what I wanted to ask, was a request. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good morning to the board. I want to reiterate and kind of piggyback on what Vicki was talking about. It seems like it's been a long time since we've had any kind of appraisal of the marijuana industry in Calaveras County. There's a lot of pieces to it. You know, it's from tax collection, enforcement, permits, you know, what the sheriff has to, you know, report on it. We've seen an awful lot of indoor growing busted, but very little information after that as to who it might be, what cartels might be involved. And it's particularly interesting now as we see the violence coming up from Southern California and is right on the boundary of our community, with cartels being identified in Modesto, Oakland, and Sacramento. Now, I know some of that information is probably privileged and under investigation, I hope. But, you know, what should the citizens of this county be looking at? How are we protecting everybody here? And we've got so many operations that are targets for cartels, and they're in neighborhoods. You know, is there any way we can have like an update from the tax collector, Division of Cannabis Control, code compliance, anyone else who's involved in the marijuana industry to give us up-to-date information rather than finding out, yeah, another, another indoor grow was busted. Okay, I got that on NICSOL. You know, it doesn't take, it's not a leap of faith to look at the names that are involved in the indoor grows and kind of wonder where that cartel might be coming from. Again, that may be information the sheriff can't disclose, but it's information that we're all interested in. And what should we be looking out for? Not panicking, but what kinds of things should we be looking out for so that we're alerted instead of finding out after they arrive and it's too late, like so many people throughout California right now? And the news has been absolutely horrific. And I don't see that anything is going to get better until we start taking a stand and finding out what we can do and support our sheriff, our law enforcement, support our county, do everything we can to keep Calaveras the way it is, the way it was when we came here, instead of it turning into a Santa Cruz, Monterey Park, Torrance, whatever else is going on. And probably before I get home, there'll be two more shootings on the news. Anyway, I just like to make that request.
Any other public comment? Is there any public comment online?
There is no online public comment.
Okay, we will move on to public comment. We will go to the consent agenda. The consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for a later discussion. Is there any board member who wish to remove a consent item? No? Is there any staff member? None? Is there any public member wish to remove consent item?
Fourteen.
Pardon me?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Okay, fourteen. Anyone else? All right, excluding item fourteen, I'm open for a motion for the remainder of the consent.
A motion for the remainder of the consent. Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. Can the person that pulled item fourteen come up, please?
Good morning, Board. Al Segala. Item fourteen calls for approval and authorizes the board chair to sign a resolution approving the request for an allocation of $2,179 of reasonable early action plan, REAP 2.0. Could this be better explained, what that is? Thank you.
Gabriel?
Good morning, Supervisors. Gabriel Elliott, Director of Planning. Item number fourteen is just a follow-up to an early action taken by the board when we, when the board authorized the CEO to sign an application for the regional early action plan. This is one of these funds that's given to us by the state to spend towards furthering housing and things of that nature. The deadline for the application was December 31, 2022, but the application allowed us to file a resolution to that effect after the application had been signed. So the information you have in front of you basically is just to adopt a resolution which we would now forward to HCD as a part of the application that's already been submitted. And I don't know if I answered your question.
Again, just to be clear, it is the amount of $2,179,082. Okay, I'll-
Yes.
It's the- Yeah, so is there any other questions on this item? Is there any public questions or comments? Okay, I'll probably close that. You need to come up to the microphone if you have a question.
Susan Morse, District Four. I'm not clear what this is, and I wasn't here last year. Is there a better clarification to what he did say? I couldn't quite understand what he was saying.
May I?
Yes.
Under discussion and summary, it's basically, I'll sum it up, is it's to integrate the state's housing and climate goals. So they hit thresholds for us by years to hit these certain goals. And at this time, we're putting together, the REAP is an action plan to hit those thresholds that's required by the state as we move forward. And the state's giving us money to implement that plan.
Okay, so in other words, this is part of the agenda, the state agenda?
It's on the-
Right, sustainable, whatever. But, so my question is then, so we are mandated, right? If we get money from them, then we have to do certain things in exchange for the money?
We're mandated to hit certain thresholds and goals when it comes to housing and climate over the years. We don't necessarily have to hit those thresholds, but we have to show that we're working towards, getting towards them. And the state's giving us money to put together the plan. And that's what the REAP action plan is. Is that correct, Gabriel?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and then what benefit do we get? Does the county get a benefit for that? Is it-
The plans allow the county to be at a better statue when applying to grants or other state or federal funding? Gabriel?
It's in the agenda item. It's all written in the agenda item.
It's in the agenda item.
It's in the agenda item.
It's, yeah. One of the things we could use the REAP grants for would be to, for example, expedite the construction of residential development in the county and to help those who are trying to bring projects forward to pay either plan checking costs or permit costs, or most importantly, the cost of utility. So this is an opportunity for the county to actually fast-forward its housing development process if it satisfies certain criteria, which is within an area that is considered a transportation node and things of that nature.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other public comments? Seeing none, I bring it back to the board. I'm open for a motion.
Move.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, passes five zero. We'll move on to the regular agenda, but I want to take a five-minute break before we go into this item number sixteen. So five minutes. Before I have an announcement, before we go into the regular agenda, item number sixteen, today, as you can see, is somebody's birthday. And so in that honor, we have a cupcake that we want to present to her. And seeing happy birthdays, so everybody. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Sarah. Happy birthday to you.
And in case anyone is wondering, it's twenty-nine.
Wait, we want, what? We want a speech? Happy birthday, Sarah. All right, we'll move on to item number sixteen. And thank you, Rebecca and Stacy.
And Robin.
And Robin. Yes, thank you, Robin. All right, we move on to item sixteen. This is an action item. It's the Health and Human Services Agency. This is to authorize the board chair to sign a letter of support for the Mark Twain Healthcare District in the Calaveras County Behavioral Health Crisis and Wellness Center. Wendy, you're presenting.
Good morning, members of the board. Wendy Alt, Behavioral Health, Calaveras County. And I'm here today with Randy Smart, and we are requesting a letter of support to support the Mark Twain Medical District in applying for a round of grant funds through the state. This is not in any way tying us to a partnership. It's just saying we appreciate the work you do in our community and we support you moving forward in this. And I did want to bring to your attention, it also crosses over three of the strategic focus areas on the plan for the Board of Supervisors of Calaveras County and the safe and healthy of our communities, and the balanced economic economy, and the infrastructure. So us pulling together and working with the Mark Twain Medical District will help us with our crisis services. As I said before, that the majority of the individuals that come for crisis support services come from the Valley Springs area, and they have to travel while in crisis to our San Andreas emergency room. That's an extended amount of time to be in a car while you are at your worst. Not to mention that the individuals driving that person there are usually one of our law enforcement officers. And so they're taken out of that beat, or wherever they're supposed to be, in order to take an individual all the way to San Andreas and sit there with them until that process takes place. So having this project in place would allow individuals to have that step of going just to Valley Springs and not that further space all the way to San Andreas. And with that, we'll have Dr. Smart go ahead and give you a little bit more information.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board of Supervisors, County Staff. We were here December thirteenth as an informational item. Supervisor Huberty, you weren't here, so I can back up a little bit. But basically, we, what we brought to the county was this really exciting opportunity to fund healthcare in the county with state funding. Not a loan, a grant with a really reasonable match, a ten percent match, which is kind of unheard of in the grant world. So we were really excited about that. On December thirteenth, the morning we presented that, we were also informed that we, Ms. Alt was awarded- we, Ms. Alt was awarded twenty-two million to change this entire campus, which was really exciting. And at that time, we presented the idea of two additional applications. One was an application to expand our Valley Springs clinic by another ten to fifteen percent, sixteen hundred square feet, something like that. But the second application was to build a separate building in the west end of the county for behavioral health. The, the Board correctly said, are you sure you can staff that? Are you sure that isn't too much? And we actually took a step back, and we said, you know, maybe there is duplication here, and, and the last thing I want to do is build a building that is empty, and, you know, it's like building the bridge to nowhere. I don't, I don't want to be one of those people. So, we took a step back, we talked to state advisors, technical assistants, and we decided the separate building down in Valley Springs was probably too much, and we withdrew that application. So, this morning, we're here just talking about one application, which is the expansion of the clinic. That application is based on a points system by a committee down in Sacramento, and one of the important things about those points is having a letter from the Board of Supervisors. So, so this action today is really important to that application, it really strengthens it. What I am really excited about is the amount of support we've had from the rest of the county about this. So, we've been around the county at various meetings, talking to people, and what I can tell you is, we have letters of support from the tribes, we have letters of support from CCOE Education, the Sheriff's Office, West Calaveras Rotary, the Mark Twain Medical Center, Senator Alvarado Gill from the state, and yesterday, with Supervisor Garmenti's help, California Health and Wellness. So, we've had a tremendous amount of support. Kind of our last stop is this meeting today. If we can get a letter of support from you, we will be ecstatic. And there's no obligation to this, it doesn't obligate you to spend any money, it doesn't have any legal obligation, it just means she and I work together to try to make behavioral health more accessible in this county. That's the only obligation. Right now, our behavioral health backlog, backlog, I'm not sure about yours, but mine is two to four months. So, if you come into my clinic with a behavioral health crisis, you have to wait two months before we can really intervene. Now, we try not to do that, of course, we have people, we, we just change things, but honestly, it's two to four months, and one of the limitations we have is space. So, adding the space really will make a difference. Supervisor Garmenti, you were asking about workforce development, I thought it was a really good question, and one of the biggest challenges she and I have is workforce development. We're very much into a strategy now of grow your own, and, and we're really trying hard to do that. We have people in the clinic now that are interns, and we actually have high school students that are interested in this kind of work. So, we're doing a lot of grow your own. We also have two national recruiters we work with, and, and that's fair, that's been fairly successful. And then third is, we have a pretty robust retention program. So, so our history in Calaveras, as long as I've been here, is we train people and they leave. We train them and they leave. And, and, and so, we're going to try not to do that anymore, we're going to try to train them and keep them, train them and keep them. And I think you do that through retention. I mean, most recruiting programs forget about retention. They do recruit, oh, well, they left. But recruiting retention is super important, and, and we have a, I think, a pretty good plan to do that. So, to address your question, I, I think we're positioned to provide workforce, and we have a good plan, no guarantees, but we haven't built anything yet we didn't fill up. So, that's a good sign. So, I'm happy to take questions, I think there's information in your packet, a simple letter of support would be wonderful, and if necessary, we can always report back on progress.
Any Board questions? Supervisor Garmenti?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Gary. And thank you guys very much for this, this is a very exciting program. I do continue to worry about workforce development, but that's kind of a general issue for our overall county. A lot of different levels of healthcare providers is, is the, and thanks for the, thanks to the district for taking on all this. Would it, do we have a residency program? Can we get a, can we get a psychiatric residency program going on up here at, at that level, and then obviously therapists and all the way through at the system? Are there things that we can be doing to help out on that? It'd be nice to have housing for our retention, but working on that, an earlier agenda item, what can we do as a Board to help you guys out with that?
I, I think we can work together, sir. I, I would like to do, you and I have talked about this a little bit, gosh, four or five years ago. We need to do that, we have a demand, it's, it's good for the residency. You had a better connection with that than I did, from some of your Modesto work, and so if we could, we could meet again and talk about that, it, it would be fantastic. I'd like to do that.
Yeah, I was looking, I was over at, I was over getting some healthcare, and I was looking at these rural residence programs coming out of UC Davis, and it'd be great if we could get some psych residents coming up, maybe stick around, grow our own.
I want you to keep that in your thought when you get met your budget.
Anyway, thank you very much. I have no questions.
But, but to your point also, the more we do together, the more likely it is to work, and the more siloed, you know, it just doesn't work anymore. So, that she and I are working together, you and we are working together, that's what we really need to do.
There's no shortage of mental health needs, so.
No, it's, it's growing.
Thank you.
Supervisor Stopper?
Thank you, Dr. Smart. You know, very interested in the collaboration in the future, working forward on things. Most of your information's here, you've been very open in talking to, to most, if not all of us, about, about everything moving forward. I just want to thank you for your dedication to the community across Calaveras, much less, you know, the area where, where you're working at, down that area is the highest population of the entire county. And as Ms. Wendy brought up earlier, you know, that, that there's quite a few people in need of these, this type of service within, within that area, being such a high population. So, we appreciate all the good work you're doing.
You're welcome, sir.
I just wanted to say thank you, Doctor, for the backstory.
Yeah, you're welcome, sir.
Yeah, I want to thank you too, and it is, like Supervisor Stopper said, for the west end of the county over there, you opening that clinic up several years ago, and the progress you've made with it, and now we're expanding, I think it's beneficial to all that end of county, or just the whole county itself. So, thank you very much for the work you guys do down there, and more than happy I am to support this, so.
Yeah, I'll just throw this in, sir. There was a day last week, we saw a hundred and twenty-three appointments. That, that's a lot of appointments.
That is a lot.
That's a lot.
The mental health.
Uh, the entire.
The entire, well, Health and Wellness Clinic. And it's really, for a hundred and twenty-three patients and the size of the clinic that it is now, that is outstanding, that is really good.
We need some parking places.
You need more parking places. And I don't know if you guys have been to the, I know you've been there, and you know, but it's on the north side, they're going to span on the north side, where there's like a garden, some trees, their area, and move it out, so they're not losing any parking areas or anything like that, or having to go across the street, across the way, which they initially were going to do with the Behavioral Health Building they were going to put in. But, yes, very supportive, and so glad that you guys are working together, and we can work as a county with you guys, so.
Thank you.
Is there any public comments? No public comments on this item. Is there any public comments online?
There are no public comments online.
Okay, well, this is an action item, I'll bring it back to the Board, and I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, authorize the board chair to sign a letter of support for Project One of the Crisis and Wellness Center.
I have a second.
Second.
A motion and a second, a call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero.
Thank you, Dr. Smart. Thank you, thank you, Wendy.
Thank you, Wendy. All right, with that, we'll move on to item number seventeen. Item number seventeen is an informational item only. It's informational. This is from Planning, it's receive a staff presentation on cannabis ecotourism. Gabriel, you're up.
Good morning, members of the Board. This item is, as you rightfully said, an informational item. The issue of ecotourism has been brought to my attention quite a while back, and I've been trying to get an audience to see which direction, or, you know, the, the Board would like to go. Basically, the request would be that if we could, ecotourism would be one of those things, that would be an additional layer to our existing cannabis regulations, and the way it would work would actually depend on each individual's specific request that we get. I couldn't tell you precisely what it would look like, but I can tell you what it would not look like, because of some of the, you know, the challenges we may have with, with some of the existing regulations we may have at hand. But, it would help to know that it's been done in other places, and that they have regulated it in a way that works with their individual, individual codes. So, we do allow agritourism by right in certain zones, RRA, you know, you could, you know, do wine tasting tours and so on and so forth, that's not regulated. However, when it comes to cannabis, we haven't really crossed that line. So, the two issues before the Board today is, which direction do you really want us to go on this particular item? And that is why the recommendation is just to receive the presentation and perhaps have a discussion. Thank you.
Martin, do you have a comment you'd like to?
Yes, I just, I, I don't think that the, I don't think it merits the amount of angst that it puts out into the community. I think that in the four years that I've been at the Visitors Bureau, I've not had one call regarding cannabis tourism. I just don't think that, that ultimately, it's, it's something that we need to deal with right now.
Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I respectfully disagree, I think it is something we need to deal with. I've gotten a lot of calls about this. My question is, you know, obviously, this is a, a, you know, if you're an ag company, I wanted to have tours of, of cows, I could do that, because I'm an ag producer.
Absolutely.
We, cannabis does not have the same rights, because we have not declared it a, to be a agricultural product. What are the, and so it would be a non-issue if it was, what are the material impacts to seventeen point nine five by declaring this a ag product?
Well, for starters, and I think your question probably has a deeper answer than what I'm going to give you, but for starters, we would have to go into seventeen ninety-five and modify certain sections of it. For example, Section zero one zero, which would be the purpose, Section zero two zero, which would be what are some of the things that are definitions, for example, we would have to add cannabis tourism as a definition in, in that section, Section zero five zero, which would be what would be the standards that we would actually allow, once we say this is the way we want to go. And then, Section zero six zero, which is the application process. So, there has to be a way that we want to manage this, through the modification of the application itself, and then zero nine zero. So, that is the, the easier part of, of the process, is we, we can do the paperwork. There are some other complicated parts of it, you know, which were ingrained into the cannabis legislation itself, which would really not be applicable in this particular instance, for example, badging and, and, and things like that. Who do, people will have to have IDs on them if they are part of a cannabis enterprise. You know, when Mr. Oliver and I were discussing this this morning, the example was, if you were the bus driver who was driving a, you know, a cannabis tour bus to a location, for example, would you be required to be fingerprinted and, and have a card as if you were a procurer of, of those services? So, there are some really vague areas that we still need to kind of get into, but before we put shoulders to the wheel, we want to make sure that we are, we're, you know, heading in the right direction.
So, okay, I understand the process would need to be changed, and those type of questions would have to happen, but if it was an ag product, would that limit our ability to regulate it, certainly as far as the things that are really vital to it, including, you know, how we go about our inspections, permits, all those security?
Right.
Are those, will those change by simply declaring this an ag product? Or can we maintain those safety pieces while being an ag product also?
Absolutely, I think we, I think we can, because we, you know, we, we have a lot of the mechanism already in place. We have all the security measures, all the inspections, all those things are done, we're just adding an, an additional layer. But, when it comes to declaring a cannabis an ag product, I, I had a conversation not too long ago with, with the County Council, and there is other issues that need to be considered along those lines, which are legal, and also, I don't know precisely how, because we had an EIR for cannabis, what this type of modification to that section of the ordinance is actually going to have on the general language of the EIR, and so on and so forth. So, it's going to take quite a, a little bit of, take a step back and, and kind of put our heads together and, and, and give you a more robust answer, if that is the direction you want us to go. I don't know if Sarah wanted to comment on that?
Just briefly, I think, I think the short answer, Supervisor Garmenti, is yes, obviously, by, by treating cannabis separately from other agricultural processes or products that has allowed the Board to regulate it in different ways, and in terms of zoning and on a wide variety of fronts. I mean, I think that it's difficult to speak to specifics, I mean, as Mr. Elliott said, we obviously have an EIR for our existing cannabis program, without knowing exactly what additional activities, in addition to what's being conducted right now, that individual folks or projects might be looking to do, it's difficult to say what we would have to amend or change, if that makes sense. There are certain types of activities that may already be permissible today, without having to change anything. On the other hand, other types of proposals or projects may well require changes to zoning, changes to seventeen point nine five, or other, other provisions of, of county code.
Because when we do agritourism for, let's say, a winery, they're required, are they required to have administrative, administrative use permit to do that?
No.
No?
In the RR zone and in some of those other zones, it's just something that's allowed by right, it's, it's, it's in the code. So, you, you could do those kinds of things.
You go to, you go to building and get your.
Right, and, you know, required to have a, a tour bus to move people from one place to the other, they're allowed to travel freely. However, because of the nature of cannabis, places that have done this, and I think just to be sensitive, you know, to the, to the angst, if I can borrow your word, they would require that any kind of tourism activity be kind of coordinated, so rather than additional traffic on the roadways, the purveyor would, you know, get a tour bus and, and kind of shuttle people from location to location. Now, some of these other, some of the other components of it could also cross over into lodging, for example, I know there are facilities here as part of the land use that's already been approved, that do have bed and breakfast on the property, and, and so on and so forth. So, you know, camping, for example, i- it's permitted in, in certain zones as well. So, like Sarah rightfully said, there are certain components of it that are already covered. However, if we're bringing it under the umbrella of cannabis, then I, I think we need to, we need to kind of narrow things down a little bit, and totally understand what exactly we are doing and how we're going to do it, just because of the nature of that industry.
I think that. I think that, I think the question that you posed to us is you're trying to find out whether we want to explore this.
Yes.
So my input back to you would be yes. I think we ought to explore this, my vote. But I think I would like to take the approach of trying to normalize this under making it an ag product and find out how that impacts seventeen nine five materially and the things that we've done. Because I think for the most part, the system's working right now.
Right.
This is becoming much more mainstream and common. And so it's not, we're not where we were five years ago. And I think the industry has proven to be a reasonable partner.
Right.
As they've gone through some pretty hard economic times.
Yeah.
And so, you know, and I understand some of the complexities.
Right.
Wine tasting or cannabis tasting, to me, you're not supposed to drive impaired no matter what. So, you know, I just think that as this becomes more mainstream, we ought to try to figure out how to make it like any other product we've got going. While trying to find a way to maintain the system that seems to be working, which I know we have some adjustments to make. So to your question, that's where I stand.
Thank you.
Ben?
I certainly hear what Supervisor Hubbard has to say, and I certainly hear what Supervisor Garmendy has to say. I fall somewhere in between those two. I'm never one to shy from the angst, you know, when it comes to getting anything done. But at the same time, I have heard from a few people about this. But where I stand is, we have something that's, in my opinion, I'll agree with Mr. Garmendy, we're something that's working right now, you know, and it's limiting. I'm not in a rush to change that to a higher level with so many gray areas and unforeseen events when it comes to something like agritourism right now. So maybe something to consider in the future. I think we're a little ahead of ourselves trying to push something that there are so many unknowns at this time. And I haven't, you know, while I have had a few people ask me about it, it's not to the point where it's a game changer with that many people in Calaveras County asking me to do with it. So I think we can, you know, take our time when we, when we look at something like this and make sure that we keep doing the right thing. So not high on my priority list with everything else we have going on.
Amanda?
I have similar questions Supervisor Garmendy asked, such as the impact of seventeen point nine five. We also have lawsuits. What are the impact to the EIR? What are those processes that we need to make sure that we're not going down something and revisiting those things? And I would like more clarity on that. I agree with Supervisor Stoppa, it's a system that's currently working. There's so many gray areas. But with what you're commenting on about camping and BMBs and things like that, we have an issue with that already in this county. So how is that overlap when we add cannabis on top of that going to address the issues that we are currently facing with some of those ag tourism issues? You know, I've heard from wineries, the struggles they've had to promote ag tourism just themselves on the alcohol aspect of it. So how, if we can't resolve that in the current system, how are we going to be able to bring that foundation into a very gray, unknown area? And so I'm worried about, and I'm concerned when we can't address the current issues with wine and those struggles that that industry is having and then bring that, bring those same concepts into cannabis. I think maybe the more, the one question I would like to learn more about and consider would be, do we want to bring this as an ag project in general? Because if we can't, we can't address that question, then I don't think any of the others can be even talked about. Because to Supervisor Garmendy's point, you know, there's just, there are opportunities out there, and we need to be able to evolve to continue an economic, expand an economic commodity in this county. However, there are some things that need to come first to have that discussion, such as seventeen point nine five. Do we want it as an ag product or not? Because they're not going to dictate what your workload is going to be in the coming future. You know, there is an opportunity, you know, you look at Ben Organ, you look at Mendo Humble, you look at what Berkeley's done up and now tourists. But what are the state regulations on that? And is there an additional barrier that we're unaware of? So it, you know, it, not, again, but there's just too many unknowns right now.
I totally respect your point of view, but let me just interject a little bit. All those other industries you mentioned are not regulated by, you know, by the county. Wineries, they're allowed by right, et cetera, et cetera. You are already regulating cannabis very, very strictly, and there are state laws in that regard. So I think rest assured that the protection is already there. I think what we need to do, if it's a majority decision on the part of the board, is to do some exploration, you know, how it works in other places and how they have been able to withstand whatever some of the challenges they have been. One thing is for sure, even our regulation under cannabis currently is a little limiting. And if this is that avenue that provides opportunity for those who might be strapped, you know, it's, it's, it is just something that is, that is out there that I think is worth discussing. But then, again, I am not going to spend my time on it unless I have a majority of the members saying, go do it.
I would respectfully disagree in the terms that wine is not overseen. I've had more complaints from wineries saying that what they want to do in terms of ag tourism on their property, they have been shut down by the county. So I think we should be careful and ensure that we are acknowledging those issues that are out there that have been, come up. I'm just, I, there has been issues and the county has shut down their ag tourism ideas. So if we can't address those ideas, I do not know how we can continue that platform into cannabis. And I'm not saying it's since you've been here, but it has been over the years.
Right.
That there has been challenges. And we, you know, we have, I want to be able to use that foundation to bring into all types of ag tourism.
Absolutely.
But if we can't tackle that foundation, I don't know how we're going to have a successful outcome in cannabis, regulated or not.
Yeah, I mean, I think tourism in general, whether it's agritourism, cannabis tourism, is a good thing for the county. I think we need to have a brand. We need to be known for something. And most importantly, we need to be known for something that generates revenue for the county. If you, if you don't mind, some of these complaints you received regarding wineries, if you can forward them to me. I don't have a clue what they are and why they would be, but I would like to know to see how we can resolve them. Thank you.
I'd just like to say that we do have a tour company here in Calaveras County. We have one. And they have been struggling for over a year just trying to get wine tours off the ground. I just, I just am not convinced that there's a demand for the cannabis tours.
Thank you.
I totally respect what Supervisor Garmendy has said, though.
Thank you.
And if we're going one more comment, I think we as a government have to be very careful about putting up barriers to entrepreneurs who want to create new business and new wealth. Tourism is our number one industry in this county. There's no debating that at all. I think if we think we know what exactly the future's going to hold or exactly what every consumer wants, that's not our job. Our job, that's the entrepreneur who's going to go out and build new business in this county. And that's what we need to foster and move forward. So we're talking about this mountain of regulation. How do we get around it or build it bigger? We ought to remove some of it. Maybe higher and more complex isn't the answer. Maybe getting simpler.
Thank you.
Mr. Garmendy, you're talking to my libertarian side of my heart right now. You know, and it's hard, hard for me to speak against that. But with something like this and the state not even getting it right so far, and, you know, with, I really, to say, to say the least, with, of the counties across the state that have regulated, I really feel like Calaveras does have a solid system. If anything, you know, my libertarian side of my heart wants to go with you like hundred percent for everybody on everything. I'm not talking about marijuana. But we need to slow walk this if we're going to, if we're going to do it. We need to slow walk it and make sure we keep doing it right, you know? We haven't fallen on our face this time around yet, so let's not get going too fast and trip up, okay? That's where I stand.
Okay. So Mr. Chair, without getting into the policy aspect of this, and this is, this is good dialogue. This would be the kind of dialogue, just to get an idea, you know, what the board's, you know, thinking. We saw the public to hear from as well. But as far as timing, I know there's a lot of very important things that you've put on the plate of the planning department that you want to get done, you know, with GHG reduction, you know, the zoning ordinance, community plans, and I can continue. So it'd be a matter of also priorities in my mind. I think you realize right now in the planning department, out of a authorized strength of nine people, I think we've got only four or five actually people in there working, you know, right now. Like a lot of other departments, they don't have the full staffing. So there's a practical element here, too, of, you know, how many things can we be juggling at once? I remember talking with my IT director who had all kinds, there's all kinds of great things you can do, but so you're going to get further faster if I can use a rifle instead of a shotgun. You know, I can, I'll do a better job and get it done quicker, you know, project by project. Doesn't mean everything has to be linear. You can move some things concurrently. But I think there's a practical limitation, and we want to make sure what's your highest priorities, the things you want to work on, policy aspects aside.
Thank you, Greg. Do you have any comments or questions?
I'll just say that I'm in agreement, I think, with Supervisor Hubbard and Amanda and Ben. I don't think it's the right time. I think, you know, what we're doing now may be, seem to be running very well, but I don't think we're at the right place right now to open this up and add more to it. I do know that even though it may seem that we are running very well, we haven't had a report, and I think it was brought up earlier, the public made comments that we haven't had a report on how it's going and what things are being done at this point with what we have in the county. And I do know that if we add this to it right now, I'm still getting complaints from my constituents in my district that some of these farms are very close to residential developments and areas. And to add buses coming in and people to do tour, I know it's going to be a big sell to me, to them, more complaints from them about what's going on. So I think some of this, these questions and things have to be worked out if we're going to go forward with this because it's just not something that we can just turn around today and say, okay, in favor of it, and then just let it go. I understand what Supervisor Garmendy is talking about, and, but I'm not so sure in this particular industry right now because it is still new to reduce some of the regulations on it, what she was talking about. I think it has been very quiet, as we have, Jack and I have sat in this boardroom where it was full and right side, left side, and all kinds of things being said. It's kind of quieted down, even the number of people here today is a great number less than what we were if this had been five years ago or six years ago. But I just can't see this moving forward right now. So.
Thank you.
And with that, I will open up the public comments.
Hi, good morning, Mr. Chair and Supervisors. My name is Sarah Bodnar. I'm a new face here, but I have been working on cannabis policy all over Northern California since legalization. I've been working locally with Jennifer Smith of Canvas Farms and some of your other operators here to paint a picture about what this could look like here in Calaveras. And I want to just open up some perspective because I think we'd be missing a great opportunity to continue with exploration and continue having this conversation, which clearly needs to be had, about what, where, when, and why do we introduce new activities? And there is a whole list of state licensed activities that are available here in California that the county of Calaveras hasn't yet activated. And I will tell you, many other jurisdictions similarly have been slow to activate, and really nobody has done it right with cannabis agritourism. There are pockets in different places where a city or a county has done something innovative, but nobody's really taken it and said, you know, we're going to be a place that's known for doing this well. And I think Calaveras could be that place because of where you are and your rich agricultural history and some of the operators that you have here. And I think opening up this exploration would allow you to look at myriad activities. We're not just talking about buses of people on rural roads. We're talking about the only option you have right now to consume cannabis is basically go into a store and leave it with a paper bag. Imagine if that was the only way you could drink a beer. Imagine if you couldn't go to a winery if you wanted to. Imagine if you couldn't have food with your wine or food with your beer. We have such limited experiences that we can offer people, and there's a whole new type of what we call canister, which is a cannabis-interested tourist and consumer. And we're missing them. And most of California, which is one of the most famous cannabis-producing regions in the entire world, is missing them. And here, with your proximity to the Bay Area and Sacramento, you've got these people, and you have the right place for it. And so continuing to have a conversation about what are these other facilities? Could we look at allowing a tasting room, perhaps, in the right zone with the right conditions and a use permit, that somebody could be having a beautiful view and buy cannabis where it's grown? Wouldn't that be lovely? You know, what if we could allow for a farm tour so somebody can come see it being grown professionally and at a regulated farm that's followed all the rules? So we have, we have those kinds of options if we continue to explore what Gabriel has brought forth. And thank you. Thank you to Gabriel for opening up this conversation because you know how long it takes to set good policy. And starting now gives you that chance to look at it, be thoughtful, think about what's right for here, and to allow businesses to start to dream a little bit and to help grow your tax base, grow the opportunities, and attract and retain new kinds of visitors here to expand what you already have. Thank you.
Okay. I've heard a comment today that there's a lot of gray areas and missing pieces and all that. A lot of these issues were crystal clear back in the day. I've done this for a couple of years. I've been to a few meetings. All of this was defined many times. It was investigated many times. Ag was never going to be attached to pot. It never, it was never going to happen. We've investigated that. We've been through it. There's been multiple votes with multiple boards of supervisors saying, saying no. And now we hear that while there might be some money involved, we've heard that story before. You know, how much money are we actually taking in? That's why we need to find out what's going on with the current program. The history of this whole thing is before us, and we can see it. This has been tried before. A few years back, I think Supervisor Toffanelli might be the only board member who was there then, when the Richardson Project was proposed up in District Two. And that was going to be, you know, jerking around the zoning and the purposes within the zoning. And, you know, it was a pot grow. He said, no, it can't be agriculture. So he planted some grapevines. And that didn't make it agriculture. And then maybe he planted some pansies or something else, or got some chickens. But the people in that area, and it was a subdivision of lots of lots, were outraged to have music festivals coming into their neighborhoods, to have traffic coming into their neighborhoods, to have all this extra activity in a neighborhood where they've lived at most of their lives and enjoyed the peace and quiet. Most of them have retired, you know, so there's no money, there's no history to do any of this. And if you do, if you want to go forward with this, you really have to scrutinize it. This needs to be before the Planning Commission. This needs to have a town hall meeting where all the citizens of Calaveras County are aware, either at downtown San Diego, at the Town Hall, Bret Hart Theater, there's lots of places to have town hall meetings. We've had those before. Wait until you see and hear the outrage. If you try to put the Richardson Project... Town Hall, uh, Bret Hart Theater, there's lots of places to have town hall meetings. We've had those before. Wait until you, you see, see and hear the outrage. If you try to put the Richardson Project in, calling it something else right now. It's the same thing. It's a scam. There's no money in it. You can rely on TOT or the incremental increase of TOT, uh, to make money off of this. TOT goes up and down seasonally. You know, we need to look out for the businesses that rely on lodging up in District Three and other places. We've got restaurants that are failing. We want to get people up there. We don't need a Disneyland-style tour with kids in a pot grow. There are other things that we can support and move ahead with and bring this county back up to where it used to be, especially District Three. It's dying on the vine up there. So if we can get it to the Planning Commission-
Your time is up.
Well, it was fast.
It was fast.
Okay, thank you.
Other public comments?
Mr. Segalia. Taxpayer Association. The more I learn, the less I realize how little I really know. Um, how many people here know what the current state of the cannabis market is? One. Okay. Um, in order to, for government to get involved in the marketplace or try to manipulate the market, um, it has to first know about it. Now, from my understanding, there's three parts to cannabis. One is hemp, which is the, the fiber. The other one is THC, which is the, uh, which is the, I don't know if it's addictive, but it will, uh, will influence your thinking quite strongly and interfere with your language. And the third one is CBD, which is, um, uh, not, not harmful, uh, but used quite often in lieu of, uh, aspirin and other kinds of painkillers. Also kind of relaxes you. And so the, the first and the third kind seem to be okay and a good benefit. Now, as to the market, I was, um, part of a group that, um, heard, heard a study of this with the industry giving its side of it. This needs to happen here. And it turns out that the cost of marijuana is dirt cheap right now. The reason why it's dirt cheap is because there's plenty of it. So if there's plenty, I don't know, I'm not sure how much of that is, is regulated or non-regulated, and I'm really not sure if anybody knows how many of the growers in this county are regulated versus, you know, what the percentage is between the two. I got a feeling that a good part of the, uh, industry is, uh, is unregulated. So we have a situation where there's, the county has obviously done no harm to the market, otherwise the price wouldn't be so cheap. So the question is, is to have a formal kind of, um, tourism-type process? I think, yeah, leave that up to the industry. They can figure out how to do that. Uh, you don't have to teach them how to, to, what to do with a bus and, and also the noise aspects of that. We already got plenty of laws on, uh, on hurting our neighbors. And there's plenty of, uh, legal processes to protect people and protect property rights. So I recommend doing a harm. Thank you.
Other public comments? Mr. Strange.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Um, let, let me first start with a, a simple statement. Uh, May 2022, an article in Forbes Magazine, that cannabis tourism is now a $17 billion industry in the United States. Okay? And before, Sarah did a great job, much better than I'll be able to do, on kind of describing how California is such an important part of that. So we have a decision here in my mind, a simple decision, is do we allow the world to pass us by? Or do, do we decide that we want to be part of that $17 billion industry and growing? Okay? And obviously, there's some challenges with that. What, what, Martin, I appreciate the comment on the winery tourism. In my opinion, the analogy is a little challenging because we have wineries almost on every corner. Okay? And so I think that, that from, from that standpoint, I would hope we'd never see cannabis operations on every corner in Calaveras County. I see a very small, limited opportunity in some locations to really make a difference. And, and that's kind of where I'm looking to push. Uh, I, I've had licenses. I've withdrawn my licenses now because me personally, the dollars and cents don't make it. If I could do some value-added opportunities, it would, I mean, it's a game changer. Okay? And I'm only speaking for myself. And, and wanting, I've got a beautiful property on the South Fork McCullum River. I've been approached by out-of-state, deep-pocket investors that would love to be part of the tourism aspect of cannabis because they see where that future's coming. So we can decide to put this off and wait next year and next year and next year, and we'll get nowhere with it. Or we can decide to at least start that conversation now, work with the existing framework and ordinances that we have, do some conditional approval. Let's monitor that. Let's be transparent. And I can guarantee every one of you sitting in here today will be nothing but impressed with the, the revenues that come from the taxes. Right now, you've just lost $70,000 from me alone by withdrawing my licenses. Hopefully, that's a temporary thing. But then you add the TOT, which we're looking at doing overnight accommodations. I've got two clients right now. I do a lot of biological work. Two clients, they're doing the glamping, eco camping kind of thing. They have over 100 units. That's not what I'm talking about on my property. But why are they in it? Because the huge income. There's one company alone that has a $174 million annual revenue for maintenance and membership.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Other public comments?
Vicki Ranky. Um, I am speaking on behalf of Calaveras residents against commercial marijuana, crackem. Um, we've been at this for a long time, five years at least. And I'm here always to remind you of this whole process and what the residents of Calaveras County wanted or didn't want when it came to marijuana. They voted no to have an ordinance go through that would regulate marijuana. That was voted down because the people didn't want it here. So the Board of Supervisors, a couple of years later, decided, well, we want it here. So you, and not you particularly, maybe you weren't on the board at the time, but it was voted by the Board of Supervisors to bring it here. The people didn't want it. Remember, sorry, but marijuana is a drug. The purpose of marijuana is to get high. And it's okay if you're an adult and you want to use marijuana and get high. But the people here didn't want it in our communities. And yes, Garam, Supervisor Garamendi said, well, it's normalized now. Maybe in some people's mind, but not in a lot of families' minds. They don't want their children exposed to it. They don't want to see it here in Calaveras County. Yes, it's here. It's been very under the radar, which has been okay because that is helpful for the community. But to ever make it an ag product, you better never, ever do that. You will have the wrath of the people on you. Because that was one of the discussions I remember, again, and I know Bill brought that up, that, and all the supervisors really agreed that we should never make it an ag product because it is not an ag product. It is a drug. And if people want to come up here, there's dispensaries up here. They can buy some marijuana and go out into the wilderness and have their marijuana out there. That's fine. Um, so anyway, I wanted to remind you about that, and hopefully you will never consider making it an ag product because it is not. Um, the other thing is about the money. This board gave up $2.3 million in taxes because they were so sad that these people were losing money. Well, you know what? We all go into business. We all try our best, and if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. And why are we bending over backwards to try to make it work when technically nobody really wants that product here in our county? And we get to make those choices locally. I looked at the state, um, website, and I didn't see anything about ecotourism in any of the information given out by the state. So I don't know where, how's that, did we get like two minutes now?
Three minutes.
That went very fast. Well, I hope you got the message. We don't want to expand it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki.
Good morning. My name is Jay Smith, and I own one of the small, struggling farms in Calaveras. As I'm sure you guys are aware, the cannabis industry in Calaveras is and has been struggling over the last few years and definitely needs other avenues and sources of funds to keep this industry here alive. In the past, Calaveras has been on the forefront in many ways, coming up with industry standards, guidelines for our county, in which a lot of other counties have used as a template. Today is another opportunity for our county. I said this is not only an opportunity for additional revenue for our county, but also the opportunity to teach people hands-on about how the industry works. I said, why would you not support someone trying to bring more income, tourists, and education to Calaveras? Regardless of your personal feelings on the subject, this is the direction in which our industry is going. Um, and I appreciate the time to share my thoughts with you on this. And by the way, cannabis has a lot other needs to, uh, getting high. I beat cancer with it three times, so there's a lot of other positive avenues for it. Thank you.
Yeah, you need to talk to the board, but-
I apologize. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Susan Morris, District Four. I just want to say, uh, thank you for your careful consideration this morning when we heard all this. I too have been here coming to these meetings since 2016. I heard all of it for many, many days, many, many hours. And we've learned a lot. The county's learned a lot. We've made a lot of, um, given, we've given a lot to the cannabis and marijuana industry. We don't want to make any more mistakes. So I applaud each one of you that want to, want to look into, not even, I'm not even sure you need to look into it. We've looked into it. We've had all the funds, the big money promised to us here. We've taught, it's been over and over and over, hours and hours. And so thank you for being careful and thinking about this because I think when we talk about experience, Calaveras County has a lot of experience in what's the right thing to do and things that are not so good. So anyway, I applaud you, and the residents will be applauding you also.
Mr. Bolger.
Good morning. Mark Bolger, Rimbarc Farms. Um, I have to say, it gives me a glimmer of hope for California politics when I hear an elected official mention that there's some libertarian blood pumping through their hearts. So thank you for giving me that hope, you know? Um, anyway, as an unabashed capitalist, I think any business is good business. I mean, makes sense to me that, um, you know, bringing people to the county and bringing more dollars to the county is a good thing. Um, I think the way we solve this pretty easily is do what we all know makes common sense, is make this an ag product. Um, I know that's not gonna get anywhere, but what the hell, I got three minutes, might as well say it. Um, I think also, you know, going to staff's report that I didn't hear the planning director mention, but it was in the agenda item printout, Humboldt County was mentioned several times as a, an example of what this could be. And, um, I think Humboldt County's doing a lot of things to help struggling farms there. And I mentioned it six weeks ago, two-year tax break. That's hard for us to compete. Sorry to hijack this a little bit, but, uh, anyway, again, I think that, um, moving projects forward and pumping up agriculture and, uh, any tourism that follows is a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Good morning, Board. Jennifer Smith. Um, where to begin? I think many of you know I bought a winery, and it is a licensed and bonded winery, and then I added cannabis to that. I can do everything with, in relation to agritourism because I'm zoned ag. I can have people tour my wine grapes. I can have people taste wine. But because I have cannabis, I can't do the same with cannabis. The state calls it an ag product, and we need to start treating it the same. It's a plant. Um, this isn't about necessarily dollars and cents. This is about bringing an education about cannabis and Calaveras to a broader audience. It's about the senses and people being able to smell and taste and learn about it. This isn't about tax revenue or extra TOT I'm gonna get from my Airbnb. It's not gonna, that's not gonna be, you know, the savior of the budget of Calaveras County. This is about education. This is about image. This is about bringing a, a new, a new tourist, a new, um, guest to Calaveras County. They come here for wine. They come here for skiing. They come here for our outdoor, um, experiences, rafting, hiking. We're a beautiful county. Cannabis is a part of our county. Let's not ignore it. Let's expose people to the education of it smartly. Let's de-stigmatize it. Let's be a leader in this and not a follower. We lost two valuable years during the ban, and our farms are suffering because of that, because they lost relevance. Let's be ahead of this. Production-only counties are going to suffer. Wineries, wineries don't just get to grow grapes. They get to make wine. They get to show off their vineyards. They get to show off their locations. They get to have people come and taste their wine. That's normal. That's agriculture. That's what we do. We are an agricultural county, and this is just no different. And so I want everybody to, like, take a minute, take the, you know, and think, like, we're not asking for this to happen today. We're asking for it to be studied. Um, we know policy takes a long time, and the longer we wait, the further we're gonna fall behind again. We really have a chance. We're looking at, at places like Humboldt, Trinity, Mendocino, that are falling behind because all they have and offer are small farms that are failing. We have the opportunity. We have great policy here. We have great farmers here. We have amazing properties that people should go see, like Terry's, like mine, like Mark's, like Dennis's. We have opportunities. Let's take advantage of that, and let's be on the forefront of this and not fall behind. Thanks.
Any other public comments? Seeing none. Do we have any online?
There are no online public comments.
Okay, we will close public comments and bring it back to the board. Is there any final comments? This is informational item. Supervisor Garamendi.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Supervisor Toffenelli. It might have taken me seven years, but I can now count to four. So we'll move on, but I will leave with just one last thought. You know, we as a government are pretty good at building structures and putting businesses and individuals in boxes, which means that we're picking winners and losers. And I often, in my experience, don't think government in general is very good at that. So whatever we do, I think we ought to think about removing obstacles to entrepreneurs and new business and really walk the walk of being business-friendly. And that means not assuming we know how the entrepreneur is gonna make, go out and figure out how to make a buck. You have to have safety protections in your community. But I just, I just want to caution us, um, about getting, making things too complex. We ought to make things simpler. That's all.
Any other comments? Supervisor Stopper.
Again, Supervisor Garamendi, seeing to my heart. Um, with that, it's, I do have interest in this. I think that the board has been clear about what our priorities are. Um, we've been talking about doing, you know, this is primarily put forward by, by planning when it comes to these type of things. We still have implementation of the, the general plan, zoning ordinances, uh, and other things that, that have been brought, brought up that, you know, we, we have year, years of work to do still. But with that, at the same time, you know, any, I, I am open-minded to any, um, investigation on how we can make it easier for any business, you know, uh, to operate within the confines of being good neighbors to our community at the same time. I, I do want to keep in mind also, uh, a comment that, uh, Mr. Toffenelli made. And I do, I do hear the same thing from a lot of his constituents. Some of them used to be in my district at the top of the hill there, near, near you. Um, so I think there are- So I think there are the right places to do this type of tourism on a lot of these farms. I do agree with that. But I think there are some farms that are currently operating underneath our ordinance that this type of tourism would not work in certain communities. And so if we do investigation and we do look at this in the future, I think we need to keep that in mind and how are we going to regulate that so we can keep our community as a whole happy so that they can live in the peace and prosperity that they chose to when they moved to Calaveras County? That's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Stopper.
Can I just say, I just wanted to say that previous to this meeting and the growers that I spoke with did not see the merit in this type of tourism. Obviously, I'm very pro-tourism, and I just wanted to thank Mark, Sarah, Jennifer, Mr. Strange for your opinions.
Anything else? Okay, with that, we'll move on to the next item, which is supervisor announcements. In compliance with Government Code 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of the local agency and may make other announcements or report out. We'll start with Supervisor Hubbard.
The CSCAA.
CMCA.
Nope. CMCA, we did do the meeting.
No, no, this is Child Support Agency.
Thank you. And thank you very much, Chair Toffenelli, for putting me forth as vice chair for that board. Very, very important topics, and I'm glad to be sitting on that board. Thank you.
You're welcome. Supervisor Garramendi.
I attended R.C.R.C. last week.
R.C.R.C. and all affiliate entities I attended last week, and we have an UMR meeting on Friday.
Supervisor Follendorf.
I too attended R.C.R.C. last week. And the one thing that I would ask this board is there are some committees, primarily RACCO, that I would like to be brought back for reappointment. Chairman and I have spoken, and we would like to switch me from an alternate to a primary. So if we could, if the board would be willing to have that back as an item to switch and reappoint our positions between the two of us.
We will get it on the agenda.
Other than that, I don't have anything to report.
Supervisor Stopper.
I attended my fellow job training agency yesterday, appointed chair for that. You know, it coincides with a lot of, you know, the job opportunities within Calaveras and the surrounding counties. And also, we're working with the CSEDD at the same time on when it, when it comes to the SURF things. We'll be having a meeting coming up on that soon. Upcoming CSAC Executive Committee meeting, Ms. Follendorf, is Thursday. If you have any interested, just listen, listen in. If you have any comments, let me know. I will be putting them, I'll put them in for you if you just want to forward me any comments when it comes to issues.
Thank you for the reminder.
Yeah. But, you know, pretty broad, pretty broad on the legislation, and it's still early in the year right now, so we are pointing out to you coming up. Other than that, Chair, I'll leave it to you.
Happy birthday, Sarah. I want to point out, I did not attend the R.C.R.C. meeting that they had, but I did hear from Supervisor Follendorf. Some of the frustrations that I have been experiencing with the Corps of Engineers for a number of years is not just here in this county. From what I understand, a number of counties have spoke up at the R.C.R. meeting with their dealings with the Corps of Engineer and their reluctance to issue any permits for them to do any work in any of their channels or creeks or rivers or whatever, too. So I think that, to me, that's a little bit of relief that we're not just the only county that has experienced that type of problem with them. And it seems like with the number that I was told of counties that were speaking up about it, that possibly with Jack on that board, we can hopefully get them to take up the Corps of Engineers and their reluctance to issue some permits for debris cleaning in these creeks and rivers so we can clean up and allow the flow when we have the events that we had over the course of the last couple of weeks happen, not only here in Calaveras County, but throughout the state. So, thank you. That's all I have. Craig, do you have anything to add? Sarah?
No, thanks.
Okay. Stacy?
No.
No? Okay, well, with that, we will stand adjourned.
Just, sorry, just because...
Oh, we have to go to closed set. I'm sorry, you're right.
Complete closed session, and we'll...
We have to complete the closed session till we will go back into closed session.
And then we'll report out at our next meeting. Thanks.
Thank you.